...for student issue, and we've recessed. When I did open, I didn't do the pledge, so at this time I'm going to ask that we please rise up and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to those of you who joined us this evening and those of you that are viewing from home. We'll start off with public participation. Public?
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if you want to, I guess you can.
No, it's not reported, something else. Hello? Is this at a good position here?
Yep, just state your name again.
My name is Brian Zawaki. I'm a student in the class of 2018 and the student representative to the school board. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your consideration. I can't obviously disclose the details because it was a non-public, but I wanted to thank you to know that we're going to be heard and that we can at least reach a compromise. That means quite a lot. One of my fears was ultimately the, I want to try and find a way to phrase this because I've been told I can phrase non-offensive things offensively. Sometimes it's something I'm working with on my desk.
I've been told that myself.
Oh, what a world we live in. But I wanted to, but I was ultimately worried that if, had, one of the reasons you had put forward the request is according to the former principal, Mr. Jazokis, you had been asking him for some time to bring forward a student representative. And it was my impression that one of the reasons that you did that, and both the board and Mr. Jazokis and Mrs. Vaughn had worked closely with the form to Tigers to Tigers, was to really promote student leadership. I'm glad we can uphold that. I was worried that if that wasn't the case, that it might cause a ground swell in student participation, and I'm glad that's not going to happen. That means quite a lot to us and to the class of 2018. I don't know how everything will be received. I'm hoping it gets received well. And on another note, in hope, I wanted to extend a hand representing just myself here, a personal thanks to the school board for the opportunity I've had to be able to try and represent the student in St. Farmington High School here and some current events. And unfortunately, I only ended up getting 29 surveys. I did the count myself. What a hell. But I also wanted to ask something. Because I remember being told the name, which I don't remember, and I don't see another student here tonight, is the new stu-, I know, to my understanding, a new student representative has been picked since this is going to be my last meeting here.
This is your last meeting, that's right.
Hey, does anyone remember the name off the top of their head? Because I was told and forgot.
I've not yet been given a name, Brian.
The student document is not confirmed at last, or you're in question.
We're hearing it's not confirmed yet.
Okay, I remember hearing a name, and that was a name a few weeks ago, and that was about it, but...
Not yet confirmed.
But I do want to thank, I want to thank you all for this opportunity because this is my last meeting here, and it was certainly a wonderful opportunity to get a new perspective on how everything's going on here at the school and to hear some of the concerns. Because oftentimes people will laugh, like, ask, "Why is this happening?" And I, hang on, I remember when, one of the earliest meetings in which I attended, we were discussing both the HAP policy and a lunch program, and you were conversing with some of the staff members, and some people might have asked why the change in the lunch program. And I remember you had actually mentioned, because I think the figure was like $80,000 or something of approximately that size. But to be able to get that new perspective was enlightening.
Well, thank you, Brian. You've had a good job filling that role, so good job.
It's nice to know. I don't always, I will always wonder whether or not I do.
And I think you get to take your nameplate, so don't, you should. What else are we going to do with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. Just one last recu-, asked request, actually two. One, when a name is given for the new student representative, is it possible I could be put into contact with them? Because I want to forward the surveys that I have to them.
Yes.
Thank you. And two, I remember speaking with a few of you about this before we even hit the non-public or any of the meetings, because I'm, hang, because I remember talking with you, I remember talking with Mr. Shagnin earlier on it, and on it, and I'm thinking I'll probably talk with Mr. Bailey if I ever have the time, who's also working tech here. So here, I've attempted emailing before, and it doesn't seem like my emails can reach members of the board or the superintendent. If that's supposed to be allowed, then maybe that's just a glitch, and I was wondering if that could be looked into?
Talk to me.
He said he sent me an email, and I didn't get it.
Yeah, I'll, let's chat.
Cool.
Okay.
And I was wondering about that, so I was like, wait a minute, if that's a restriction, perhaps I should just ask if the student rep can usually be allowed, and how it's special access, but if that's not, maybe that's something I would just talk to you and maybe about. I figured I'd ask, because I was up here.
Okay.
But overall, just thank you. Thank you for hearing us out, and thanks for the opportunity, and I wish the next student rep best of luck.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Good job. Other public input? Anyone? Yes?
Boyne Chant, Farmington resident tech sphere. I just have a couple of things, and like Brian, I like, I come to meetings because I like a new perspective on things, so I've been, I've found it very helpful coming to meetings. But I have a couple of very quick questions. Will you have meetings throughout the summertime, and will they be held at the regularly scheduled weeks and times?
Yes.
You do meet in the summertime? And they'll be televised, I assume? Okay, a question I have about the, about Channel 25. I don't watch it 24/7, so just know that when I've tuned into that channel, I, it appears there's just like public service announcements. I can't really explain, there's nothing about the school. So I'm not sure if these are school, if these are student-produced programs that they're showing.
Yes.
Yes.
The man behind the curtain.
But there's nothing that really tells us that on Channel, at least I haven't seen it that tells me on Channel 25. I've not seen, you know, school activities, I've not seen a school board meeting. Sometimes even after I attend one of these, I try to see it on TV, because sometimes I can't always hear, hear when the fan's on, so I try to watch them from home. So I'm just wondering if something can be looked at, maybe even on Channel 25, put down, you know, when the meeting's out, what times, what dates, when the, when these meetings are going to be rebroadcast, if that can be put on, so that people like me, maybe I'm the only one who watches 25 because I don't have internet. I don't know.
I think, Mr. Shagnin, correct me if I'm wrong, don't they usually show the following morning at a specific time?
Tuesdays at 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.
And is it, when, when you go to Channel 25 and nothing in particular is showing, Mr. Shagnin, and you have those public service announcements, is there anything that says that, that used to?
It used to be, not anymore. I'll take it though.
He's going to add that then.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chan.
You can just slide that over a little bit, yeah? No, no, just the microphone.
The microphone, oh, my apologies.
Something else worth mentioning, I know you don't have internet, but as like also me, had, so maybe it won't be as applicable, but I also to mention, I actually found the board meetings on a playlist on YouTube.
Yes.
They're actually on there as well, as a note to anyone on the public, if you missed a meeting, you can easily find it on YouTube, they're uploaded very quickly.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public input? Okay, approval of minutes. Minutes of May 21st, 2018, public session.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these.
These are the non-public session three.
Thank you. Very little small thing, but under reports on page two, there's a sentence about halfway down, "The board would like," I think we should just put the word "to" in there, "would like to acknowledge effort in future plans." I think that just sounds a little better.
Yes.
But that's all I saw. Anything else, folks? Any? All those in favor? Aye. We have an abstention.
Abstaining.
Mrs. Cardinal's going to abstain, she was absent that evening. Okay, non-public session one for May 21st. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion.
We reaffirmed some in public, but we didn't reaffirm two people in public. The retirement of Bonnie Tellis and Lynn McCann.
Actually...
I remember seeing those.
Those. It's not mentioned in the minutes, so maybe that should have been in the public minutes.
Actually, yes, they were at the bottom of page three, in the public minutes.
Okay, I apologize, I did not see that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Anything else?
We're in non-public one. Sorry. So when we open in non-public, and this, it might just be redundant, putting the roll call vote, because the vote actually happens in public to go into non-public session. So I don't know if it would mislead into thinking that we're actually voting to go into non-public when we're already in the non-public.
So this should be in public session.
Yeah, and that, it is in fact in the public session like it should be, it's just there twice. No need to put the roll call vote.
Yeah, I think we could take, that doesn't need to, we could just take that out.
Swearing.
Yep.
Amendment suggestions to strike from roll call vote on to the rest of that first paragraph.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Abstention. I'm abstaining. Non-public session two for May 21st. So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Frida. Discussion.
The next to the last paragraph, the person's name is with one P.
No, yeah.
And actually the...
It should happen twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, the third paragraph about the rocks was not part of legal?
Correct.
Oh, that's right.
That was in public?
That was in public.
Yeah. That needs to be moved to public. Probably the same thing in the beginning, we moved the roll call vote.
So is that mean the third paragraph on, all happening in public?
No, just the rocks part, just the part about the, just that the, the rocks were not part of an invoice, the rocks off the roof, that wasn't part of legal.
And then I have a question about some of the content, so I don't know if anyone is willing to table the approval, so that we can discuss it in non-public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to table? By Mrs. Moore, second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor? Aye. Discuss those after. And we would just pass the non-public session three sealed minutes. Do I have a motion for these?
Second.
So moved by Mr. Frida, second by Mrs. Moore. Discussion.
Okay.
All set? Mr. Frida, all set? Okay, all right? All those in favor? Aye. Any one abstention?
These are sealed, right?
Oh, please go back, yeah.
And then the only notation that I would make is on the, when we list those present, that we're just consistent with the Mr., Mrs., Ms., either for all or for none.
Yeah.
I know, I, I like Mrs.
All set?
Yeah. I can go by Ms. too.
Well, no, what she's saying is not everybody's listed with a, with a...
Ms. or Ms.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I thought you meant that I'm the only one.
No, you and I are the only two that...
Yeah, I claim my husband as well, so, yes.
Okay. We're going to jump down to reports and start off with our financial report. Mrs. Verba.
So in your, in your Google folder, a series of financial reports, as well as explanations of line items, if you want, we could start with the May revenues. Revenue report, everybody's got that accessed.
Okay.
Yep. And so just bringing to your attention, under line 15, we have, although it's not reported here, it got posted after May 31st, after I run these reports, adequacy aid, we received an additional $4,738 from the Department of Education, because it was actually an allocation that went to all, all school districts that did qualify, and it had to do with the smarter-balanced testing in 2015 and 16, and it's something, it was an erroneous error on the state's part, not ours. So we do have at least some additional revenue coming in. Under lines one and 16, the funds from the town as of the 31st of May due are $1,893,635. While Department of Revenue issues, you know, last fall, they issued, you know, what the school portion and what the state education portion was, and the current town appropriation is on the form, which I did upload into a Google Drive, on one of my internal worksheets for monies to collect from the town. I had omitted the state education tax portion, but the town is aware of that at the beginning of May, and so we've readjusted when those payments are going to be coming to the school, June 11th, June 25th, and June 30th, as tax payments start coming in. Let's see, in terms of overall revenue, by the time we're done at year end, we'll probably be receiving an additional $26,000 in revenue, so that will go back to fund balance. Questions on revenue pieces?
Is that $26,001 larger bump, or is it as a sum of multiple small...
Accumulation, yeah. So it would be the $4,700, it would be a refund from unemployment insurance, let me see, there was another piece, a couple, it was, I think, a tuition payment that we weren't expecting, that a student would be here, and then, yeah, small amounts all in aggregate. If we'd like, could we, we want to move on to the general fund, year-to-date expenditure report. If you're ready, if you have that called up, just a, just a couple of areas. Under lines 13, 14, and 15, those are the substitute lines for teacher substitutes. And the way this works is that we do not encumber the funds, but once a substitute is hired for that day, if we need a sub, whether it's a day or a half a day, then as the time card is submitted, that's when the individual is paid. So we don't encumber funds. We do certainly earmark, though, you know, our notes that, look, we do need to have enough money for substitutes, but if, as I look at between now and the end of the year, it would probably be another $3,500 or so between all three schools that we would be spending on substitutes. So there would be some savings there.
Although we do have some flu going through area schools, so don't hold us to that, please.
Right, right. Just another, another area, just to draw to your attention, under line 105, you show that there's a variance there of $455. We did do a workshop, Mrs. Donato did a workshop, in, in which staff, because it was out of the norm and the workshop had to be done, they were compensated for their time, and she's going to be covering that from other special education contracted services, and we're in the process of doing that adjustment. Line 202, I think I've spoken to you about this before, but maybe not quite as concrete of a report, under line 202, vocational tuition. We have 18 students currently enrolled, and so although we have an encumbrance right now of $91,970, we're not going to need all of that. By the time we finish paying the second half of the bill, as well as the bill in the fall for the amount that the state does not contribute, there will be some savings there, probably about $47,000. Just a couple of other areas, under lines 231 and 232, this is for athletics, for extracurricular. We do have that covered from line 245, referees and Umps. Whenever we have an employee, a teacher who also works as a referee, and we do have a number of them that do do that, they do have to be paid as an employee, so that's why you see that, those negatives there, rather than they're being paid out of an object code that looks like subcontracted labor. Let's see here. Let's see, under line 347, we do have speech pathology wages, there is a negative variance there as well, and that is also for the same staff that, Mrs. Donato, had go through a training session. Let me see. Line 393, this will be, this is also a negative variance, $542, but it's travel for staff development. And the staff development, it's pre-approved in advance when staff are going to be requiring mileage, and this will end up being covered elsewhere in the budget, so it is a pre-approved expenditure. Let's see, under line 479, let's see here, there's a correction being done for this, this is on New Hampshire retirement. Let's see, I just lost my report here. All right, let me just call it up again.
Would you like it?
No, it's all right, I'm good. What did I get? Let's see. Oh, Sam, I must have two things running, I'll, I'll end up going off of my notes then from memory here.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Are there any questions so far?
If you want to look at the lines of the answer notes.
Hey, just looking for the number in that line item?
Yeah, under line 479, there is a negative, yeah.
$239.
Yeah, and we're just doing a variance, we're making a correction to that, because we don't, we should not be in the negative, that $4,239. Once we make the correction, that should be, there will be a positive number in there. So that's ongoing.
And that was the adjustment that we had recently?
No, I have to reconcile that out. So that's, yeah, I have to reconcile that out.
Was it just a number transposed, or the wrong account number was transacted?
Wrong account number.
Okay.
Yes. Let's see, I just, okay. All right, so let's see, line 578, this is salaries for substitute custodians, and now we have a negative variance on that, but basically it's been offset. So it's a negative variance of $6,138, but it's, you'll see that it's offset by the other lines, line 574, and...
575.
Yeah, and also at the high school, 577, in which we had staff in transition, we were hired temporar-, so people are hired temporarily to cover those vacancies as we get the positions filled. Then lastly, under lines 591, 92, 691, 692, and 693, I had already anticipated that electricity would be going over by about $10,000 district-wide, but you'll see that there are encumbrances in there to be able to cover for our June billing. And then lastly, under line 722, there is actually an over encumbrance under that line. We're in a negative right now of $4,738, but if you look at the encumbrance of $21,625, that's over encumbered. What I have is probably a projection, this is, would be for the remainder of the month of June, about $13,000 would be needed for the bus drivers between now and the end of June, that's for the regular bus runs. That's pretty much all I have to report on that, unless, obviously, if there's any other questions.
Questions on expenditures?
The electricity, why is it, I mean, did the rates just go up by that much?
Well, rates do, rates do go up twice a year in August and February. It can be a combination of things, rates, you know, the rates going up, usage...
And the rates did go up both those times.
Yes, you know, consumption, combination of things. I can certainly share my kilowatt drive, my spreadsheets on the kilowatts, if you want to take a look at that piece.
Yeah, I think we'll definitely need that, because I'm going to recommend, you know, in the fall, that if, because we're not locked in on a contract negotiating rate...
No, we are not.
Because we actually didn't have the usage even when you had approached the town for municipal properties, and whether or not we could collectively bargain a rate, but there wasn't enough uses.
Not for, not for electricity. I've had providers reach out to me, saying, "Would you like to go into a co-op?", and I've asked who the other communities were, and I never, I never got a response. I'd like to know who we're entering into a co-op with, with some of these companies. I was not, it was not named specifically that it was the town of Farmington.
Okay. Maybe I'm recalling incorrectly then, it might have been fuel, like heating.
We talked about, we talked about electricity.
Well, I think that's definitely our next area we can look into. I know by, from reading the minutes from last budget committee meeting, there would be an opportunity for us to try to purchase some of the power that will be coming through the town on the lower rate, through the solar farm.
And because we have all the, all the kilowatt history, I want to say that, well, at least five years, at least five years' history, and that's pretty much what they would be looking at, yeah.
Great, yeah. We'll definitely need to do that before we plan our budget for the following school year.
Other questions? Don't we have a special illegal line?
You do.
Like, what is it? I can't find it. I've been looking.
You haven't spent much out of it.
No, you really, you actually, you haven't.
I think it might still be right around $6,000. Let's see if I can find it.
For some reason, my computer's not working.
I'm looking through all the 1,200, aye?
Yeah, it's not listed under 1,200, though.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Well, that's why I can't find it.
That's why, yeah.
Where, is it?
It's under 20...
Is it like support services, or?
No, it's, I don't think I have printed out in my particular section. I think, I thought you were under 2318. Yeah, under 464, it's under function 2318, and...
What?
Line 464.
464.
Page 18.
Page 18. So you've had a budget of $5,000 and not needed to use it.
Okay. Excuse me, thank you. I was...
Just kind of hanging out there by the phone.
Yeah, I was looking at the other legal line, and I thought I'd just glance at that one, so. All right, anything else? No? No? Okay. Curriculum report, Mrs. LeFave.
At this point of time in the year, I thought I'd focus my report on three major areas, the first one being state assessment, which has been unfortunately a good chunk of time spent, but we're almost through that portion. The second one being Title I opportunity for summer programs, as well as professional development plans for summer for teachers and staff here. So to the, speaking to the assessment piece, when I wrote this on Friday, I wrote that 95% of our students approximately have completed student testing. I did some more today, I'd say we've got like three, I think, three kids left in the whole district to wrap up. And students, teachers, everyone involved, all stakeholders, have put their best foot forward. It's not the most, you know, pleasant time for, for all involved, but they've made the most of it. And I think the students were very well-prepared, content-wise. And I think the students were very well-prepared, content-wise. Teachers, they've been spending time with students, orienting them to the interface, especially at the younger grades, the third grade, who haven't participated in this specific one before, were demoed with practice tests and given the opportunity to learn the navigation of the actual system, where to find the answer buttons, how to put a fraction in, those little things they might not know intuitively. So kudos to staff for doing that. Friday, June 8th, is the deadline for state-required assessments, so we, the three we have left, we will have those done by, by June 8th. Just a reminder, the ones we've done in grades three through eight, we've done New Hampshire SAS Student Assessment System in reading and math for all students. Grades five, eight, and 11 participated in the New Hampshire SAS for science, in addition to their reading and math. And then at grade 11, we did the SAT School Day in reading and in math as well, with the writing optional, and our students participated in the writing. As state assessment data for this SAS is real-time, so pretty much within, within a day or two of the students completing the assessment, data is being generated and put into reports. The reports aren't super user-friendly, it's a massive spreadsheet with breakdowns in about 27 different areas within, so I am going to work on condensing that into a more usable database for teachers to use when they go to their next data meeting. So they should have information on the students they're going to be, they have this year, as well as incoming students before they leave for the summer. So it's been, and for the science, I just got word that the new assessment, they're going to be doing standard setting over the summer, so that data won't be available until late summer, early fall, for the science piece, just, basically, they haven't set the standard for that yet. And I did put, I put an application to the state to be, asking to be part of that, so that would be a great experience, to be able to participate in that standard setting. So, haven't heard yet whether or not I'm going to be invited to do that. With assistance of Title I, we had some carryover money, we are able to offer a summer support program for students at Valley View and Henry Wilson this year, to kind of add to what Diana does with E S Y. So we should open that, be able to open that up to more, more than the usual.
More than those students that qualify to the special education.
So a Title I comprehensive, and that's going to mirror the same three weeks as E S Y, and we're hoping to use that money too to offer some transportation, which is not something we usually have possibility to do. Alongside that, students who participate would be able to work with certified teachers, and then we were able to fund a few web-based interventions that were research-based, put into the grant, such as Reading Plus, which is a directed independent reading, mostly for grades three and up. So for example, that one, they can indicate their reading preference, whether it be nonfiction or fiction, and they can say whether they like reading about mysteries, or history, or technology, and then it will create some, some reading lists, and they'd read, read within their interest online, answer questions, and it would find texts that would be rated to their level, their reading level. Dreambox Learning is a math one that we're able to add to their, their teacher toolbox. It's a math-based, again, directed. Each student has their own path, they take a little mini-assessment to begin with, and it kind of prescribes some different lessons and stuff they need. And it's a lot more video-based and, and that kind of thing. We were also able to fund some FAW science kits to be used over the summer and into next school year, that will help out with the next-generation science standards. So previously, ours are curriculum-aligned with the New Hampshire frameworks, but not too much has been able to be purchased since the transition and new standards, so that's, that's something that's, we're celebrating. I think we'll be able to get around 50 or so science kits for the district. Teacher professional development, looking at Title II-A, and being able to fund some things there. Our current, some of our current plans are, which are still a little, a little bit in the tentative state, just because I'm still trying to Tetris with the grants and find out where, where things can fit, but we'd like to send, send some teachers to a three-day conference in Manchester called Constructed Knowledge, and it's mostly focuses on STEM and creativity-infused instructional practices, maker spaces, and creativity-style appeals. I'm thinking a team of five or six or so teachers to go and spend the three days there. They do a night, a night to MIT as part of it.
Play in the MIT lab.
Explore some of those kinds of things going on there. No, together with Diana, we'll, we'll offer a social-emotional or social-thinking workshop at the end of August for teachers and pares, so we'll offer that as a stipend for anyone interested in joining. We'll offer, we intend to offer a next-generation science training, so with the addition to, in addition to the kits, teachers will have the opportunity to attend a five-day workshop run by an in-house trainer, Mary Ann De Toronto. She attended a workshop, I think it was last summer, and into the school year, that she made her a train-the-trainer for this specific NGSX model. So she's going to co-facilitate with another teacher who's volunteered a five-day workshop for science teachers and other interested staff. I'd like to offer an online technology tool course, and this one I'm hoping to run through Google Classroom as an online. The best way to teach teachers about Google Classroom would be to have them be students in Google Classroom, so they'll be invited to participate through there, and we'll have online conversations, they'll share articles and websites that they can try over the summer. I'm thinking it's going to run about seven to eight weeks. There won't be any scheduled face-to-face meetings, but teachers can come in and, and see me whenever they'd like to through the summer. The Professional Development Committee gave a survey to staff last month, online through Google, Google Forms, so we were able to uncover some topics of need or interest within, from the staff through that. I think we had about 80 staff members respond, so it was a pretty, pretty decent representation of interest ideas, just general tools for learning and demonstrating content knowledge, so different ways students can use technology to demonstrate what they've learned was a huge, probably the most popular response, that they'd like social learning tools, Google Apps was, was popular, and then use in integration of Smartboard, were the four top areas of need they cited. Survey date, same survey also suggests that the majority of staff find PD days dedicated to technology most helpful, but a surprising number felt that screencasts and online tutorials would be helpful. So I felt, you know, maybe starting with a short online would be a good exposure to see how many people, you know, something we can kind of keep doing throughout. The majority of staff who answered the survey use email to communicate with parents as, as their sole, sole communication device, while only a few use additional tools like a website, ClassDojo, blog, or Google Classroom. And then the third finding was that many staff utilize technology in the classroom for research or product creation, so. We found very, very few chose collaboration purposes and multimedia creation. So those are things that we'd like to give more exposure to.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Questions for Mrs. LeFave?
Yeah, one about students and one about staff, if that's all right. So for the student, the Title I grant, this is a really exciting opportunity, be able to offer more than the E S Y extended school year program. That seems to, where the impression that I've always gotten over the last several years is, there are more students that really could benefit from extended school year, but we're just very limited in terms of the number of students we could support. So how many more roughly do we think we can support by having this Title I grant in addition?
Can I just ask, Claire, I was going to ask a very similar question, so to Claire, just this as well, that, as well as, is this still for students identified, or will this be in a?
So Title I is separate and apart from students who are special education. So special education are what we call extended school year services, for those students who have special education needs, who in order to get a free and appropriate public education have to attend for a longer period of time, due to the fact that they're going to regress, or that they're at a critical point in their learning, and therefore, we need to, we want to keep them a little longer to make sure that they don't show any type of regression going into the fall.
Oh, okay.
And so those are two very separate entities.
Educationally delayed.
Title I is not limited to students who have an IEP, it's for those students who need that additional boost.
Right.
And, and one thing I do want to add along with that, both for E S Y, for Title I, and for FAMI, we're also going to be able to do meals program this summer that will include breakfast and lunch for those who are attending. So we have that piece as part of that as well.
I just wasn't sure if we were going to use that money to, you know, there's always a population of students that we determine that need that, and then there's some that aren't close, that might miss the cut, so to speak, but I wasn't sure if it was going to, and what was the number that Mrs. cried in the last?
It's to say, we, I think we put in for three teachers and three pares at, at Valley View, so that could be an additional three groups, which I'd say would be between six and eight kids or so, so could be another three, 18 to 20 kids, in addition to what we have. And then two at Henry Wilson, two teachers and two pares, so an additional two groups, so another, say, 16-ish or so.
Do you have another question, Mrs. LeFave?
So this is something that seems very new to me, all of these professional development opportunities being offered over the summer. So for our staff, first of all, is this offered equally teacher, para educator, support staff, or is this going to be centric to one role?
For two of them. I know the, the technology one is, is open to whoever is interested, para teacher, anything.
Right, because you're going to be providing it.
Yeah, right. And then the, the one Diana's doing, social-emotional, is also going to be open to both. Constructed knowledge and next-gen is pretty much geared toward teaching staff, so about 50/50, 50% will be applicable to para professionals.
So where this falls outside of the contracted work school year, this is offered as in not required?
Right.
Will it be offered again in a smaller capacity, do you think, during the school year, later on? Or is this one of those things where?
So the social thinking one occurred April 25th, which was during a vacation time, but we had great attendance at it, so this is the second round of offerings. We will look if we still have, you know, a critical mass of people that are also in critical positions, that we want to get them trained, we can look at doing a webinar. But this will probably be the last time we'll bring in a full-blown presenter, and we'll look at other ways to recapture that time.
And for the technology one, depending upon how much of a hit, the one I do over the summer is, it's something I'd like to see kind of offered, you know, different topics, not necessarily the same thing every single time, but I'd eventually like to see one, almost like a demo slam. I went to one at the Krista McAuliffe Tech Conference, and that honestly was the best PD for me, is, it was just a group of 25 educators, just shared five minutes each of a tool, their favorite tool, and how they use it in the classroom. And I'd like to create an online version where I might do the first week, but then, for example, Whitney Carrier is a high school teacher who uses a tool, I can't remember what it's called, but, for, because I ask her to do a week on that, and kind of have each week be a different staff member showcasing a tool that they, that they love, and just little work for me, but more learning, I find those the most useful, than the same person standing up in front for an hour.
All right, then we'll have other questions.
My, my only question is, when we say that three students, or approximately three students, have finished state testing, what causes that? Reluctants, absenteeism?
Combination.
Combination?
Yeah, yeah, so a couple are just absent, and this isn't a time test.
Yeah.
So technically, as long as the student is avidly working, we are required to give them as much time as they need.
Okay.
So some are just.
Just curious.
Just doing, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
And just, if I may, just recognize the, thank you very much for the effort that you're putting in, going above and beyond in leading your peers across the state by wanting to be involved in the science standards creation, and really representing our school district really well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Student Services Report, Mrs. Danetta.
So you're going to hear from me twice for this quick board report for just Student Services in general, then I'm doing a quick introduction for the Behavioral Services information that you requested. So I apologize, I neglected to mention the Augmented Alternative Communication Training, which is the training that you kept hearing in the budget report. We have students who have devices that they use to communicate, and so we had training, and it was wonderful. We had case managers and related service people stay after on a Friday for two hours, and, and learn how to, how to program these devices, and use them with students, and make it, you know, much more, much more accessible for us, and much more intentional in terms of training the student with how to use it. And we are seeing that there are going to be a few more students getting devices, so this was really important work to do, and I, you know, thank all those people that, that turned out. We had case managers and speech people there as well, so I was really thrilled, especially on Friday. Then on May 25th, Para Educators Related Service staff participated in Crisis Prevention Intervention, which is a training we do with as many people as we can get, just dealing mostly with de-escalation process, that in terms of, you know, helping a student who's at that first stage, which is anxiety, being supportive, and the best way to do that is kind of to be a good listener. If you get a chance, and, you know, you happen to be on YouTube, there's a really cute Everybody Loves Raymond example, if you're from that generation than I am, that shows how to use active listening skills. So it was a combination of direct instruction, and videos, and PowerPoint presentation. Staff are also taught physical disengagement skills, should, should a student, and we tend to see it more with younger students, but should a student grab your clothing, or grab your hair, these are the ways to get yourself disentangled, most easily, hopefully, and with the less, less risk to the student or to the staff. In terms of court-related things, we're part two, seven delinquency cases. We have three CHINs cases, but there are also three students who are under assessment for truancy at the same time. Seven families involved in abuse-neglect cases, which represents 13 students. Number of home visits over the month of May, I completed five, and the school resource officer completed at least two. And that's probably on the low end, I think he had probably double that, but those are the two I could confirm from memory. We have 52 students that have qualified this school year for extended school year services, and that's a lot of kiddos. Our largest population are coming from the preschool, with about 11 kids, and then our second grade is showing to be the, the next biggest population, so that's, we're looking forward to having them, we love getting them in there and, and having them for an extended period, because it, we see the results the next, the next school year, so we are planning that. People have been notified that I plan to use them for extended school year services, and so you can expect to see PSS forms coming your way at our next meeting. The statement, Department of Ed sent Farmington a determination letter indicating that for the school year, and we're, they're a little behind on the cycle, that for the school year 2015, 2016, we met all the requirements and purposes for the IDEA, which is, you know, our report card for, for what we're doing. So we were, we were glad to see that.
Congratulations. Are there any questions on this portion of the presentation? Okay, then I'm going to, yes, sir?
I'm just going to introduce the agenda items and tell how it got on there. Mrs. Moore has specifically asked for just some sort of updates and some data as it relates to behavior programming throughout the district. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, but.
No, go for it.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Brian, I don't think I'll need you, but just in case.
I will.
Yes. Other Brian, but yeah, you could probably help me too.
You need someone tall to get something.
That, I often do. Turn it on, search. We have letters. Mr. Shing, I'll be right back. So, question that was asked a couple times repeatedly, and it's a great question. What, what has changed in terms of students' needs and services? What, what has changed in terms of students' needs and services? I began teaching in nineteen ninety-three, came out of the classroom in nineteen, in twenty thirteen, and there's, there've been a lot of changes. And what we're, what we're seeing the most, and I think most districts would agree, is an increase in stress and anxiety. And certainly on the national scene, we've seen that change since 2001. We're post nine eleven, we're post the deep recession, and the students that we're working with right now have experienced that timeline. There's been a degree of national and economic insecurity that I think we're getting toward the tail end of, but that had been kind of the, the generation of the students that we're working with right now. Technology revolution, and it's amazing the things we can do with technology, and Melissa is a great one for, for helping us navigate that, but it's also, it's kind of taken over our students. They, and I guess I would challenge anybody to go to a restaurant and, and look and see how many people are on their cell phones, and how many people are, even though we're in a group, we're not talking to each other, because we're connected to something else. That is great in a number of ways, because we have just instantaneous sharing of information, but it's also gotten us to a point where we have some, some real difficulties. We, we have students, and this was 2015, and I have some data for you later, students in grades nine through twelve, state they play between three and five hours of video games or computer games per day. And that's, that's pretty average in terms of the data I was looking at, and the data that I, I have here, at the end of the presentation, there's a works cited page that tells you where the, where the information came from. In 2017, and this is from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, for our seventh and eighth graders, they used a computer for more than three hours on a school day for a non-school-related activity. So that's something that's really different, at least from when I started really early on, and we're seeing it with younger and younger students, spending more and more time on devices. So that's something definitely that has changed, and it does have some consequences, which we'll look at later on. Substance use in one, in the Stratford County, and this is the only place I could find this question, I believe though it was for the 2015 school year, when asked if they ever lived with someone who had a problem with Alka-Scholl or drugs, thirty percent of students in the grades nine through twelve said yes. So that's something that's changed to a degree. So what are the consequences that kind of are the, the fallouts or the pieces of this? In the national scene, remember we've gone through that kind of great recession, we still see it today when we're talking to parents and we're sitting in meetings, that we have parents that are still holding down more than one job, or they're doing work when they're not home at the time when the kids are home. And that's just a, kind of an economic reality, and we meet a lot of people that are working really hard for their kids, and that's wonderful to see, but it does result in a loss, loss of face time. We see that partly due to technology, we see it partly due to the lack of family dinners, which is not necessarily that people don't want to do it, it's just we've, we've found times in our more modern day that we're just not always there at the same time. Unemployment, underemployment, and poor economic prospects undermines families' stable relationships, and we can see that wherever we have, you know, challenges of economics. That's, that's kind of, that's kind of a part of life. Homelessness, which we have seen, and I have to say, I did not run any numbers, that's kind of Melissa's area in terms of keeping track of that. There has been anecdotally a discussion of the fact that we have an increased number of homeless students this year. When asked, how often did you go hungry, when there was not enough food in the home? In 2015, you see another grade, that there are a number of students who are, who indicate either rarely, or to some degree, it was a hunger because they didn't have food in the home. So a degree of instability there. In 2017, twenty percent of students stated that someone in their family was currently in the military. So that's also something to keep in mind, as we look at, you know, that, that trend where we had a lot of military involvement, and then people being deployed, and then returning home, and that's, that's something that, while I hadn't thought about a great deal, it's something still that's impacting almost twenty percent of our students that are here in our school district. Here's the 2017 data for technology revolution. And, you know, you can see the numbers there, that's a lot of time where we're, where we're either not engaged in face time, and so that creates a very, a very different world, when we have fifty-one percent of students spending three hours or more, and, and they don't say exactly what it is, using a video game or a computer game, it could be something that might be educationally connected, but based on the youth risk survey, that's what they're responding when asked. Twenty-two percent of students in Farmington High School said they were electronically bullied. This is something that's really new, and, and yeah, we've been experiencing for the last few years, but that we've seen an increase, an increase of this. And I think, you know, even as adults, we can see when, you know, when something gets posted on Facebook, there's an instantaneous reaction, one way or another. So you never, students and even adults are never really kind of in a state of having downtime, or not being connected in some way, shape, or form, so that it's, it can be more difficult to leave your bad day behind, and that it's kind of following students more often. So, technology revolution, and if I, I had never looked at this video till this past weekend, if, I don't know if anybody's ever seen Grand Theft Auto. It's just had version six come out, which is, has been created so that it looks much more realistic, and it, and it really does. It does include first-person sexual activity and violence, so that as you are using it, it's kind of one of those first, first-person shooter video games. You are the individual who's perpetrating whatever the act is, and it is presented to you in that version. It's really, I, I watched for a few seconds, and I had enough, it really is pretty scary. Sitting in meetings, anecdotally, we have children as young as third grade that are playing games like this. Childmind Institute of 2017, Children's Mental Health Report found that eighth graders who spend ten or more hours a week on social media were fifty-six percent more likely to report being unhappy. And I think that's, again, that's the connectedness piece. Like you, you feel like you're always connected, or maybe hashing over the same things that have been problematic before, and you can never get a chance to kind of get perspective on it, or walk away. And I think that's part of what we're seeing as we get toward the middle school, younger grades, I think, are escaping that for a large part, but as we get up into the upper grade, seventh through twelfth grade, I think that's becoming a great deal, a difficulty. Studies have been done, students who played violent first-person shooter games showed less activity in the areas of brain than involved emotions, attention, and inhibition. So part of what's also a big part of the, of the playing video games, I guess, generation is, we see students that are, because your, our brain is primitive, right? Our brains are operating on the fight-or-flight impulse, and when you're playing a game like this, you are in the fight mode, you, you are, your adrenaline is, you know, reactivating, also dopamine is being released, because it's, it's also something you find pleasurable, which is why you're continuing to do it. And that becomes some, the way kids, you know, can occupy yourselves. Substance use, I think we know, we know what all the difficulties of that are. Health risks, financial, financial inability. In 2017, approximately ten thousand grandparents in New Hampshire were raising their own grandchildren.
Can I ask you a question about this particular slide?
Sure.
This slide's referencing children who've said they live with someone that has a substance use program. Is there a national stat yet, as to how many students have been born of people with, using?
I could look at the C D C website and see if I could find that, I did not look that for specific, specifically.
I would imagine that, and I don't know, it seems to me like in the last ten years, it's just gone through the roof, that that has to play a role with what we're seeing for disabilities in public schools.
It does.
It does.
Yeah.
It absolutely does. Yeah, and I'll, and I'll look and see if I can find a little bit more on that, I didn't look specifically, I know we do have, in terms of court cases that we are joined on, there are references to parent, to mothers who were addicted at the time that their children were born, so.
Good, thank you.
So, mental health results. If, if our, if we're distracted because we're dealing with anxiety, or we're distracted simply because a house is in chaos, or we're distracted because we don't have basic needs met, we become hyper vigilant, and that's what happens with kids. And that can impact their attention, because they're attending to everything, because anything could be important. And I think that's part of what compromises students' ability to attend when we bring them into, to our traditional school setting. You know, we're, we're asking them to do something for an extended period of time, and they're, they're very accustomed to looking at a lot of things, because any little detail could be something they need to pay attention to. And then the next piece, we have stu, and this is, I don't want to say this is brand new, but this is something we're seeing with greater regularity, and we're seeing it from students that are younger. Comments that they want to hurt themselves, comments that they have thought of hurting themselves, very troubling, and troubling to parents as well, because they're not exactly sure how to manage that, because sometimes that's almost the first thing that a student says before you even begin to notice they're anxious, this is a statement that comes out of their mouth, which is loaded with, with a lot of, a lot of different concerns. So you see the data there for our, our school district. Twenty-one percent, twenty percent, and that's a, that's a good number. Thirty-two point nine percent of grades nine through twelve students, and then twenty-eight percent felt sad or hopeless, which is, you know, it really, it really hits your heart to hear that there are students that are feeling that way. We can chalk some of that up to the emotional and, you know, kind of chemical pieces of puberty, but, but that part only, only usually lasts so long. And so this is part of what's, what's different now, and what's, what's changed, at least based on what we're seeing from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So, mental health results. There's a new diagnosis that began in 2013 through the DSM-Five, it's called Disrupted Mood Dysregulation Disorder. We do have students that have this. It's characterized by a pervasive irritable mood that, that just does not go away. Seemingly angry all the time, very short fuse, frequent and intense outbursts of, of temper that are often violent, that are verbally very aggressive. And it's got to occur more than over twelve months. So we're talking about a student that has been dysregulated for an extremely long period of time before he or she gets a diagnosis like this. And PTSD, we have a number of students that are diagnosed with PTSD, due to whatever traumatic event, you know, might have impacted them, it's something that they relive, it's something that creates anxiety for them, creates sleeplessness, and more parents are reporting that their children have diagnoses of anxiety, which is something that's, at least back in nineteen ninety-three, it was very uncommon.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sir.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
No, no problem. I think I can go back.
It's okay, if you can. That new diagnosis...
Yes.
Since 2013, is that a diagnosis that is causing any kind of, like, spike in children identify as other health impaired, or is this something that we're...
This is something usually we're seeing in combination with, with, we do have a student who's diagnosed as having disrupted mood dysregulation disorder, but we characterized him as being emotionally disabled, emotionally disturbed. They might have a combination of these things, they might have other health impairment because they've been diagnosed with ADHD, disrupted mood dysregulation disorder, there might also be a specific learning disability, but typically, they don't have just one. I haven't yet run into a student had just this, usually it's a combination of a few things.
What's the actual title now of, of an emotional identification?
It's, it's still listed as emotional disturbance in the New Hampshire regs.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And I guess the final thought here is, and part of what you saw in there as well, in addition to students spending a lot of time on technology, their, students aren't getting a lot of sleep, whether it's they're connected to com, to a device, or, you know, spending their time doing other things, they're losing that time. I feel a little bit like kids are losing that opportunity to be kids, because they spend a lot of time being connected to what are the conflicts in their lives, as opposed to kind of being able to walk away from that. And as you get ready to listen to the next part of the presentation, people's behavior makes sense if you think about it in terms of their goals and needs and motives, and I think that's something all of our administrators really do understand. They work really hard to understand where a child is coming from, trying to understand, you know, what's in their background, and what's, what's driving their behavior, because behavior is all communication, that's, that's all it is, that there's something that is a struggle and is a problem. And, you know, the, the idea that kids do well if they wanna, it, we kind of have to push aside, kids do well if they know how. No one wants to go into the school and have a bad day. And I think it's mostly because of a lack of skills, and that's part of what we really want to address with students, mostly due to a lack of skills, that we're seeing students that are erupting more often. And it's, and it's simply, that's our place to begin to learn, to learn what that, those things are, they are, that they need, and, you know, make an effort to give those things to them. So I'm gonna move to the next part, invite up Cindy Berry.
Cindy, well, what can I... Just watch the floor. Yes. So pardon my voice, but this is what you're gonna get. So in terms of just ways we track it, one, the major way that I'm gonna kind of talk about tonight for tracking is behavior plans. And on the behavior plans that some students have, and not all students have them, but some students have, is, we come up with target behaviors, so things we want them to work on, that, as a team, we kind of sit down, and I'll get to that later, and figure out what challenges that student... Is that the right slide? I wonder if I just... Nope, you, way too far. Sorry. There we go. Thanks, I wasn't really paying attention to that. So, what struggles a student is having, and what they need help with learning how to do, like Diana just talked about, kind of giving them those strategies so that they know how to be able to handle certain things. So we come up with target behaviors, and on those behavior charts, there's really no place to put this, we come up with target behaviors, and so they take this behavior chart with them class to class, and at the end of a class, or at the end of a period, or whatever block of time there is, they may still be in the same classroom, because it's elementary school, the teacher will kind of pull that student aside and say, hey, this is how you did during that block, remember when you did this? That was great, remember you, remember when you did this? We kind of need to work on that next time. So, as they're processing with their student, and there's different types of behavior charts, they could be getting points, they could be getting smiley faces, they could be getting stickers, depending on the kid, but when they, our goal is for them to make eighty percent of that, so however many blocks there are at times, however many smiley faces they could get per block would equate to a number, and we want them to reach eighty percent of that, to meet their goal. And when they reach eighty percent of that, they get kind of a reinforcement, a reward of some sort. Some students get it more than once a day, some students get it once a day, depending on that kid's needs. And those rewards could vary, they could be stickers for their sticker book, they could be, one student who, if she has a great week, gets lunch with me on Fridays. So each plan is similar in that we're looking for target behaviors and things kids, those kids need to work on, but they're different in terms of what the reinforcement is, how many times a day they get that reinforcement, what those actual target behaviors are, things like that.
Can, can I ask you?
Yeah.
Wait, I just, maybe you're gonna get to it. Who tracks that?
So I'm gonna get to that later on.
You're gonna get to that?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. And then, sorry, you may have said this ahead of time, no, I just, because as I go...
I kind of started in a weird place, but I'm gonna get into it.
Is the, are these for students identified, or this could be any student?
And I'm gonna get to that, too.
Okay, good.
I'm on it, I promise.
Shut up now.
So, plan creation, this is where I'm gonna kind of touch on it. So, in terms of the behavior plan, the students I work with that are on the behavior plan that the target team works with are mostly non-identified students. There are an occasional identified student that would end up on a behavior chart, but we kind of work with the, the special education team, the I E P team, in creating that behavior chart, and making sure that it is in the I E P, and follows them. So, the students I'm kind of generally talking about are target team students, so we have a target team that includes a classroom teacher, the guidance counselor, the B C B A, the behavior interventionist, myself, and a special education teacher if the special, if it's a special education student. So the target team meets to discuss the needs of the students. If there's a student that's flagged, so the target team will look at data, and see if there's, okay, let's say there's a student that has six office referrals within two weeks, we're gonna bring them up to the target team, and we're gonna ask their classroom teacher to come to the target team. Or, if there's a classroom teacher that has concerns or red flags about a student, they will bring them up to the target team and will create a meeting. So the meeting takes place to talk about the student needs and details for the plan, come up with, if they need a behavior chart, if they do, what are the target behaviors we want to work on, what do we know that motivates them? Is there anything we notice that they're trying to get out of doing stuff, kind of like that escape behavior, that we can kind of work to avoid, or teach them how to handle what they're trying to avoid, in order to prevent it in the future?
How often does this target team meet? Is it as, as needed, or...
Okay, so, initially, they meet to create the plan, if there's a plan that needs to be created, or just talk about strategies to help the student. And then we do a check-in about every six weeks, so every term, I guess, or so. If there's a need more frequently, then we absolutely create it, if we see that there's still office referrals going on, or we notice, because we'll track the behavior data, so even though we're only meeting on that specific student with the classroom teacher at a target team meeting every six weeks, it doesn't mean we're not gonna create a target team meeting, if we're charting the data and saying, whoa, there's a spike, or, hey, these target behaviors aren't working out so well, we need to regroup and tweak the plan. Or, hey, we noticed that he asked... Or hey, we noticed that he escalates, he or she escalates in this classroom every third week or every Monday. It's a common factor on Mondays, so we meet to tweak the plan and figure out what we can do. So generally every six weeks, but more, definitely more if needed.
So if a new student is brought to your attention, you would have a meeting scheduled sooner?
Yep, there's been times when we've had pretty severe new students, more frequently than we would like, but they, in fact, this past one, we had his records come before he did. So we were able to create a target team meeting, sit down, look at all that information, create something to have in place for when he got there. And actually, this is gonna be in a success slide later on, but he, this one student came from out of state. He was in an out of district placement, out of state. He didn't live in New Hampshire, so he lived in another place, but in their district. He was considered out of district. Moved here and with the plan that we've created for him, so far he's been very successful. Has it been a work in progress? Absolutely. But he's able to be successful in our school, which is a huge step in the right direction. So there's also other target team meetings that we've started this year because we found that sometimes there are teachers that want help with strategies in their classroom rather than bringing up a specific student. So we've created a target team consult meeting, which happens at the end of the school day when the kids are gone, but the teachers are still contracted to be there. So there's still that little chunk of time that we potentially have. And it's a thirty-minute block of time where it's kind of an open door for the target team. Target team's there in the conference room. If you have something you want to bring up, or if you have a question about something or you want to tweak something, stop by. So it's just kind of an open door policy for that block of time. And then after that time is up, the target team stays and we have a general meeting. So not student-specific, but we look at the data, we track the data, we talk about concerns, things that are working, things that aren't working. So we have a time to kind of decompress and work to improve things as a general target team meeting without a specific student being mentioned. So once we have that targets, a student-specific target meeting, and the classroom teacher's there and everyone's there, and we talk about the student and what needs to be worked on, and what ideas we have for the plan, the behavior interventionist and the contracted or the contracted B C B A will actually create the plan digitally so that we have a hard copy of the ideas that we had. And then the student is assigned a case manager, but a case manager in terms of target team is just someone on the target team that's gonna be responsible for, for taking those charts, checking in with the classroom teacher, making sure things are going correctly, if there's things we need to tweak, if we need to bring them up at target team again. But they're considered a case manager for us. And then, the only other thing on this side, is that sometimes it's a little tricky because we need to make sure that if we're tracking the data and looking at the data, that it needs to be accurate. So sometimes there's not always, and some students are more responsible than others, so sometimes we put it on the teacher's responsibility and sometimes we put it on the student's responsibility. But sometimes there's blocks, chunks of time that are missing off the chart. So in, there's just little things like that we need to tweak and work out to figure out how to progress forward with it. These are some examples of the behavior sheets. And this is a good example of how different kids need different things. One student's way more visual and the other student's not. One student requires more than one break throughout the day. And sometimes there are students that get breaks in the room, in, not in the room, some in the room, some out of the room. But there are students that can earn a reward, which would be their break. If they don't earn the reward, they still get a scheduled break. It just wouldn't involve a reward in it. But they still need that movement break to kind of decompress a little bit before they move on for their day. So current responses, we have two behavior is, we kind of have a tiered system. So the first tier of behavior would be the classroom clip chart. So every classroom has the same exact clip chart. They can clip up, they can clip down. And there's teacher-assigned consequences for those clips down. So it's a break in the classroom, a break in a different room, and then an office referral. Some teachers, depending on the behavior of the student, if they clip down to red at the very bottom, it might not be an office referral. Maybe they were chatty three times, so the teacher may give them a lunch detention. So the teachers could still assign a consequence for that last behavior. Or it could go to a tier two, which is an office referral, which I would process with the student, or Rebecca would process with the student. And there would be either admin consequences, so I could assign a consequence, they could either stay with me for a little portion of the time, do some work with me, a lunch detention with me. So there were different consequences that I could give as well. Or, like I said before, the teacher could also assign consequences for this behavior. Tier three is our extreme behavior, so that's typically when the office is called and they need assistance. So the behavior interventionist will respond, or someone from the team, target team, response team would respond. And typically I'll go check in or respond the majority of the time.
Who's on the, on the team, I guess?
So the response team would be the behavior interventionist. There is also a para that helps support the behavior interventionist. So behavior interventionist or the para, myself, the guidance counselor. If it's a specific student, like there are some students that are also special education that'll have, if we're not available, the case manager will go. So they're specific grade level case managers that they have a familiar face with. So successes, this just talks about what happens when a student is successful with their behavior chart. Then we'll meet again to tweak their compliance percentage, so it may go from eighty percent to eighty-five, or to ninety, or to ninety-five in progression to get them off the chart. That's the plan. There's been times when we've noticed a student, if they have three target behaviors and one of them is extremely successful but the other two aren't, we'll just tweak that one target behavior so that they still have the same compliance percentage, but it might be one or two different target behaviors. We have a student, and I talked about her before, that she gets lunch with me on Fridays if she has a great week. We actually removed her from her formalized behavior chart, but when we do that, we don't pull their supports at the same time. So we'll still put those supports in place and then kind of wean them from those supports. So she no longer has an actual behavior chart that she carries around with her, but I still check in with the classroom teacher and say, hey, how did she do this week? Does she, is she gonna eat lunch with me? And she still gets those breaks and she still gets those reward times. Challenges, just going with the flow here, not even following anything I have. Some students learn quickly to manipulate the chart. Like, oh, I only need three smiley faces in this section and I already have two, but I have an hour left, fifteen minutes I can get a smiley face, and then I can just do whatever I want to do. So they've timed it and they've figured it out. So in that case, that's why we have some students on points. And it's like, okay, we don't have a zero, but we have a one, two, and a three. So they're like, okay, I don't, I don't have to get any zeros, I'm never gonna get zeros. But then they realize, or they have a hard time realizing that even if you get ones, you're still not gonna make your goal. So there's ways for us to kind of trick them into not being able to figure it out, but that's why a lot of the charts are different from each other. And then there's behavior bursts. So when students are, when we're teaching them strategies to learn with those, to learn those target behaviors, they'll, and Mrs. Henry knows this well, they escalate their behavior.
Gets back and forth.
Yep, because they're testing you. And if you stay with what you're doing and then they realize, ugh, you know what? I can't do anything and they're still gonna, I mean, I can't do anything to make them back away or stop the consequences that they were, have been giving me the whole time. So there's that that we deal with. Some behavior bursts last way longer than others, meaning days, like they'll be fine and then they'll try it for a day and then they'll come back fine and then they'll try it again. So we have a student that kind of has a hard time literally eleven forty-five, twelve o'clock it starts. But then the past few days, he's been great. He's been great. Because we never backed down those few days, he's tried it. Following the plan with fidelity. So the hard thing is when we make those tweaks and we meet as a target team, and if we have parent input and all that other stuff, then plans change like that sometimes. So one day they'll have one plan and the next day they'll have another plan. So it's hard to communicate that effectively and efficiently as we possibly can. So that's still something we're working on because it's not just the classroom teacher that's working with the student. It's all the U As, it's interventionists, it's possible special education teachers, it's a whole building full of personnel that are working with the students. So for everyone to be able to understand that chart for that specific student and a different chart for another student and changes that may have been made is difficult, but it's always a work in progress. Some of the numbers, so this is from this year, obviously I don't have June, but these are the numbers. So I have the number of offenses per month and then the actual number of students that was the cause of all of those offenses. So it's typically around the same number of students roughly. And then when I looked at previous years, this is down from fourteen percent. The total number of, and that's fourteen percent, I didn't count June from last year either to make it oranges to oranges, minus the completely different students. But it's, the total number of offenses from September to May has been down from fourteen percent, fourteen percent from last year. So we're making a step in the right direction, but it's always a work in progress. And this is kind of what I touched base on a little bit before. Some of the hurdles are the communication for laying that information to the appropriate people as effectively and efficiently as possible. Understanding this is hard, behavior's not black and white. And like Diana was talking about, there's many different reasons a student's acting the way they're acting. Some of them act to escape the work. So we have to understand that no matter what they do, they get their consequence, they go back and do the work they were trying to avoid before. Some of them try to do it to go home. And you learn that once or twice and then you say, hey, when they come back from being home, they're worse than they were before because they're trying to go home again. So we're gonna try to see if we can figure out strategies to help them be successful here. Tweaking and clearly defining that tier one, tier two, and tier three process, this is all new to us, but just making sure all the teachers and staff are clear and we're clear as to what is what. Like I said, it's a new system for us, we're still working it out. Last year, last summer, where those P D day, days we had without students, but we still had with staff, was the first time we actually sat down with all the staff members, grade level-wise, as a target team and said, hey, what went well this year, what didn't go well this year, and took input and tweaked this year. So we'll keep doing that until we have a refined system. Understanding everyone's role in the process, sometimes there's times when someone will get called for a behavior, but then they're supposed to be giving someone a reward at the end of the day. So people are getting upset because this student's not getting their reward like they're scheduled to get, but it's because we have an escalation in another room. So just making sure that people are where they need to be, students are getting the supports that they need, but yet everyone understands that someone may be somewhere else. And that's, it's not because they're avoiding what they should be doing, it's because they got called to a more severe situation, which goes down to tier three behaviors that interfere with other target students for more time or group time. Any questions?
Lots.
Do we wait till-
Should we give Mr. Kokol a chance and Mrs. Peabody a chance?
Uh, no, I, I can't, I can't, I gotta go school by school.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the students that do not have a behavior chart and their behavior is measured and tracked and rewarded and identified using the classroom clip chart, what role do they play in this whole process? I know, I know of some students who are picked as a peer to come and enjoy a reward together. I know of those situations just from hearing from my own children. But how do you balance when there's students who never have their own individual behavior chart and they see little Johnny can't stay on a classroom clip chart, goes away, comes back and says, look at all these toys I got?
Right.
How do you manage that and balance that for those students who, you know, it's natural human that they feel deprived?
We have classroom teachers, luckily we have very supportive classroom teachers that at times have to, when that student's out of the room, say, hey, this is what's going on, kind of generally speaking, and I know you guys do a great job and you know how to act and you have your target behaviors down and, and what a great job and kind of commend them. But it still is hard. We've had students that have seen that and have acted out and said, I'm acting out because I want a behavior chart.
Sure.
And so then there's classroom teachers that will set up a school store, some kind of reward system for those other kids in their classroom.
Okay.
I try to make my rounds and go into classrooms and kind of give everybody attention when I can, but I know that's not as spectacular as the kids, I may think it's more spectacular than the kids do. It's hard.
Just thinking back on something.
Yeah.
Nothing prevents a classroom teacher from setting up their own tier one reinforcements within the classroom.
Absolutely.
And that's a conversation, you know, I've had at different meetings, well, the student's getting extra movement breaks because there's nothing that prevents you from doing that for every single student in your room. Or setting up, you know, my, and I remember back when my kids were younger, setting up times where you are the student of the day. Here are the things that you get to do that are special during the course of the day because we are recognizing you for, for the exemplary behavior you've had. So it, it is, as we kind of map it out, it's like tier one is everybody and that's kind of at the classroom level. And what are you doing that, because we all want to reinforce good behavior. I mean, there's not one of us that wants to say, we want a, want a kid to walk away and be like, you know, this kid that didn't, you know, didn't really do his part is leaving the room and getting extra attention. And I think that's, that's what's become more of a movement is seeing in the classrooms that people are beginning, beginning to do that in order to recognize those kids that are always good and are always doing what they need to do. And, you know, the bucket filler celebrations and those pieces are kind of what you see at the more ground level.
And I know at the end of the year, you do the Tiger Award for the students who have never ever once had to go for it and make sure that it's an all-school year.
Yeah.
They seem pretty proud of that.
Yes.
And then when you have your tier three response team, you listed a bunch of different roles. Is it all those people all at once?
No.
Get on the call and they all go running?
No, no, one person will go and assess the situation. If they need assistance, they'll, they'll call for a second is what we say, so that we know somebody else needs to go with them. Or one will say, I'm not available, so that another person will answer and say, I'm available or I'm going. So we always know someone's on their way.
Does, does the data that you collect through, let's say first grade, does it follow them to second grade or is it a clean slate come second grade?
Good question. The target team keeps the data because we want to see if there's any consistencies. Is it the same day of the week? Is it the same subject area? We have kind of vertical team meetings where teachers will talk to others, the next year's teachers about specific students and what's worked. This year is the first year we want to do a target team vertical meeting. So I would like to have target team meetings with their future classroom teachers and say, hey, here's their chart we used this year, here's what's worked but hasn't worked. But some teachers say, hey, I want to start on a clean slate next year. And we say, that's fine. You know what I mean? Give the kid a clean slate. But we want them to know that we have resources that are available.
And in addition to that, does the third grade teacher also talk to the fourth grade teacher moving down to the, to the next school?
This year, we've set that up.
Great, good for you.
Other questions? I, I expected to hear more about the tree room. I don't understand how it works.
Okay.
I need to be reminded what it stands for.
Okay.
What does tree stand for?
Teach, reteach, empower, and encourage.
Okay, so I'm assuming that's what's supposed to happen in there. So kind of tell me what happens in there.
Okay. So there's students that are on a chart that may need more social pieces, social emotional pieces, or just more strategies of how to, cool, and how to deal with certain things. So she does a lot of, of that social emotional piece. She has morning check-ins with specific students. And it's students that the target team has identified that need those pieces. So she does check-ins, she does check-outs, she does lunch groups with every lunch group. She's actually the target team case manager and the special education case manager for our new student that came in that's been successful, that wasn't an out of district placement before. She also does, responsible for some of the breaks throughout the day with the kids on behavior chart, on the behavior charts. So she does a lot of that support. She's also a tier three team person that we call when there's a tier three behavior that's needed.
So a tier, a tier two is an office referral. Is it safe to assume that a tier two disruption could get sent out of the room and go to the tree room?
Yep, that would, that would, if it was a disruption, that would have caused them to leave the room and that would turn to a tier three.
Okay. Okay. And then while they're in there, we go through this teach, reteach, I'm sorry, I forgot the acronym.
Once they're in a calm state, and have the ability to process through, the teach, reteach, yes. She processes through with them, she has the whole kind of angry birds, kind of recognizing your mood for the moment, where you are, and why were you here, what caused you to be here, kind of piece.
And then what happens between that room and classroom teacher before child reenters?
The child typically, unfortunately, kind of reenters, but we don't just let them go, we walk them to the classroom. If the teacher is available, she will process with them, but it, that's hard, and that's still a work in progress, because, and we recognize that it's still a work in progress. We don't want to stop the classroom and say, hey, Johnny's back, here's what he did, here's what we did in the tree room, here he is, because we don't, it's, it's not anybody else's information to know, the kids don't need to know that. So finding that balance and getting them back in there successfully.
I think something, if I can, if I can interject one thing, part of what, what happens also in the tree room, if a student's behavior is a result of work refusal, the work should be following the student there, so that when the student is de-escalated, this child can begin by giving us compliance in one thing, whatever that might have been, whatever that task might have been, depends to the degree to which the child's disrupted. I mean, if, you know, we have kids that are banging on walls or throwing things, then the work might not come immediately, but we need some degree of compliance with a simple request for something that was being done before, or was asked of before, so that we can see that the child's ready to move forward. And sometimes it's as simple as sitting in the chair, depending on how elevated the student is.
When you say, I guess my question is, what are we doing to make sure that the plan is followed with fidelity, since that's one of the challenges? When you say we're working on it, how so?
So, when there's a new plan in place, there's been many times where I've met with groups of staff members to explain the new chart, that's happening. When I say we're working on it, I mean that we're still tweaking that system. So, yeah, I, we sit and we talk with the target team, come up with the new chart, we reach out to all the people that are responsible for that chart. Is there a chance for miscommunication, or that I forgot somebody on the team, or that we forgot somebody on the team to mention it to, or that we said it was going to start today, but it didn't start till tomorrow or the day after? Those are all things that we need to work on, making sure it's consistent.
During this school year, so let's go all the way back to August, you know, have, has there been a half day, a full day of all staff professional development around this behavior program?
Yes, at the beginning of the year, before schools arrive, schools, before the students arrive, I apologize, we go over it, and we have the past two years, since we've tweaked the whole system, we've gone over the behavior forms, who would get called, the process of getting called, what tier one, tier two, tier three would look like, when should it be an office referral? We even went through how to fill out the behavior forms together as a whole staff. Yep.
Okay, and then last questions for Diana. If you can sort of explain, I think I have a general knowledge of it, but maybe to folks watching at home, when a student comes to us, as was exemplled, from an out-of-state student comes to us, they've been in an out-of-district placement in that state, how do we determine that they're not automatically going to do that here?
We always want to try them here first, unless it's, unless it's something where we see that very clearly we can't. Part of that is, is the physical size of the child. Is this a child that is adult size? Is this a child that is a child that we can manage? If we physically had to manage the child, can we do that? Academically, are we able to make modifications that this child can participate in an appropriate way in what would be the regular curriculum? Do we have a room where the child should, the child need to be in a quiet down room, where there's nothing else in the room, and it will be just the child and perhaps an adult? Do we have that space, is it accessible? Do we have a para educator? And usually we'll make arrangements to, to connect a para educator with a student. We always want to try to keep the student here first.
Yeah, and I think that's important for viewers to hear.
Yeah.
That's why I asked that question.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Barry.
Hi, everybody. I know most of the people in the room, but for those of you who don't know, I'm Steve Coco, the Assistant Principal at Henry Wilson. So I'm going to talk a little bit, kind of similar in structure, but talk a little bit about what we are doing currently at Henry Wilson. So thinking about, we do use behavior plans as well, certainly more frequently at the lower grades, but similar to the ones that they showed from Valley View, the, the behavior charts are very similar, just in terms of targeting behaviors, things like that. Students can earn points, earn incentives, things like that. And to touch on a question that was asked earlier, this, again, for us, is not just based on special education students. Many of them are, in which case the special education teachers generally are creating those behavior plans. For kids who are not special ed students or 504 students, those plans are generally created with the guidance counselor in conjunction with the classroom teachers. Follow-through is definitely a challenge with, with different people managing the plans with special ed, guidance counselors, classroom teachers, a lot of times I am involved in those processes as well, but our current responses right now, you know, when we have students with issues, we have all sorts of different directions that we can head in, we have parent meetings, we work really hard to have a person that students are comfortable with, students that we know are particularly challenging. For a lot of our most challenging students, that would be myself, Ms. Kimbrough, who is the para who runs our student support center, guidance counselors in some cases, special ed case managers. But processing the incidents, consultations with teachers on an ongoing basis, again, with myself, special education, guidance counselors, to work on, revise those behavior plans as needed. We're doing a lot of current work in our building to build teacher toolboxes and build their set of skills in terms of dealing with some of our most challenging students, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And small group instruction of, of expected behaviors, and, and those for us right now can look like all sorts of different things. At times those are lunch groups with guidance counselors. You know, we had a particularly challenging group of kids having difficulty at recess, and I had several weeks of a lunch group with kids, and we actually had lunch, talked about what things should look like, and we went out and practiced appropriate recess together. So that can look like lots of, lots, lots of different things for us. Some of the successes that we've had, students are motivated to earn some of these reinforcements. For a lot of our kids, it is those movement breaks and the physical activity. A lot of the younger kids like to earn extra recess, there are kids who want to earn basketball time, things like that, opportunities to, a lot of these kids work up a sweat to get running, get moving, get their heart rates up. You know, just one specific example, we have one particular student who, with a behavior plan, was really able to make progress on an issue she was having with personal space and boundaries and things like that, but these behavior plans, as Cindy said, can target all sorts of, of different behaviors. Some challenges, finding individuals who can provide and oversee these gross motor breaks involving physical activities. So we, we work to come up with these plans and put together incentives, schedule breaks, things like that, but it, it can be difficult to find people to supervise these breaks, to manage these breaks, and certainly, you know, when other issues come up at times, they kind of take precedent in terms of, are they able to follow through with those breaks, is definitely something that's a challenge for us. Consistency in regards to oversight of the plan, again, for us, you know, I feel like the people who work with the plans do their best, but a lot of times they're being pulled in different directions for us, because it, it can be special ed case managers, it can be guidance counselors, it can be, you know, teachers, myself, again, lots of different people, but you know, when you have the, the guidance counselors, again, you know, trying to run their groups, their individual meetings, their lunch groups, to follow through with all those different things, it can just, it is a challenge for us to, to have that constant oversight, that consistent oversight of the plan. And some of the big issues for us, we, we've seen a lot of kids who are really presenting challenging behaviors that really take up a lot of resources. You know, bolting, leaving the school building, looking for places to run and hide, evading being in staff's sight, things like that, in larger scale disruptive behaviors, to, to the point where they're really, in different situations, taking, taking a toll on the classroom, and it's just, it's requiring a lot of resource. So the, the numbers that I put together have some similarity, and I'll explain quickly what that means. This is just a visual to look at, the orange is the total number of office referrals per month through April of this year, so generally ranging somewhere between 50 and 85 office referrals per month is what we were looking at as a total. The, the black column here, I put top 10, and what that is, is our top 10 students with the highest number of referrals in a given month. And I thought this was an important visual, because basically what this shows, and I'll show you some more specifics on the next page, but essentially, we have 10 students that are making up the majority of our referrals in a given month. So if we look at, and, and just in fairness, I guess, for the statistics, we have had turnover, so this 10 isn't the same every month, there have been some changes. I would say it's pretty consistent, six or seven students who are in the top 10 most months, but it, it shows that we do have a certain number of kids who are making up the majority of the, of the referrals. And that shows up on this slide here, so this is kind of the specific numbers that tie back to that chart that you just saw. So in a given month, for example, I'll just pull April being the most recent month on here, 45 out of the 64 referrals came from 10 students. So, so there is a strong majority of kind of top-heavy with our referrals, and you can see that just the percentages over here throughout the year, 65 percent of our referrals come from the 10 highest each month, so there is a strong majority in terms of specific kids who are pulling the resources. The, the other thing, just to kind of touch on, is thinking about the, the higher level behaviors. For us, it really has been, you know, as we tried to put this together, for example, myself pulled multiple times from the meeting, getting called for behaviors, Ms. Richardson as well, but in, in all honesty, I spend the majority of my day dealing with these higher level behaviors, with kids who are, you know, looking to run around the building, disrupting classrooms, things like that. So there, there is a small group of kids who are pulling, pulling a lot of our resources.
Can you just give me an example, so of, of those 64 referrals, what were some of the consequences for those top 10 students? I mean, I don't need necessarily the behavior, but what are some of the examples of the consequences that those students would receive?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be lots of different things. I mean, obviously, you know, in the most extreme cases, we are talking about suspensions. I, I personally do everything in my power to keep the kids in school. Obviously, there are times that we need to take that step and suspend a kid, but, you know, it, it depends. For me, I think it's really a matter of looking at what is best for the individual. So at times that could be an out-of-school suspension, it could be an in-school suspension, it could be a break or a timeout in our student support center, it could be lunch detention, recess, after-school detention. A lot of times, whenever possible, I like to have kids deal with the issue directly. If, for example, two kids have an issue, there have been many meetings in my office face-to-face, having conversations to work through the process, as much teaching as possible, but I think the, the actual consequence could, could really range pretty much anything.
Okay.
Sorry, are you, are you done?
Yeah, any questions?
Oh, this is question time, okay, yeah. Questions in the wood?
I have a couple more.
Yeah.
Does peer mediation still happen at the middle school?
Yep.
So you have a core group of students that, that work?
Correct. There is peer mediation that, peer mediation is used a lot of times when a student has an issue with somebody else, they fill out a peer mistreatment form, and that will go through the guidance office. So a lot of times the specific peer mediation process is, is not used when there is a behavioral issue. There can be at times, depending on the situation, but a lot of times it's just used when kids are having trouble figuring out a problem, they're not getting along, whatever it may be, and that's generally a process that's run through guidance.
I have one more, and it's kind of for all three. I noticed on yours, you said that the parents are involved, but I, in, in the team, or, or parents are called. Are parents ever part of that targeted team, that, that team that makes the plan?
So they don't specifically come in and participate in the target team? And the target behaviors we come up with are kind of in-school behaviors, teaching them how to be successful in the school building and make it through the day. So parents don't really give us input in terms of what those target behaviors look like. They are definitely contacted, because they are given copies of the chart and what they're working towards, and what their rewards look like, so that they can follow through with consequences need be at home.
Okay.
I, I would say somewhere.
Okay.
I think that, they're not, at times, parents are involved in kind of working through that, but in general, it's more that communication.
I think that was going ahead. Or I'll ask the same one, does, do you do vertical team meetings as well as the students progress year to year?
From grade to grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is definitely something that's happening with us, yep.
Based on the frequency by which you're saying that you have your top 10?
Yeah.
Is that equivalent to considering them tier three? Or is that not a fair assessment to say, a student may be a tier three student, but it's more of, the referral is of a tier three nature or severity?
Yeah.
Is it a little bit of both?
I think it's both, yeah, absolutely, I think it is both.
At least a two, maybe a three.
Exactly.
Depending on the day.
Right, I think that, especially when you, when you think of the top 10, there are, like I said, there are probably, you know, five, six, seven names that would occur on most of those months. You know, they might be more tier three kids, other students who might fall to the bottom of that list, a lot of months might have some of those tier three behaviors.
Okay. And then, how, how are you tracking these numbers? Like what, what vehicle are, for both Mrs. Barry and, you are using Power School to, to keep track of these?
So we use Power School to track the incidents in the actual office referrals for specific behaviors, but in terms of their behavior charts, the target team has Google Docs that we share, we have a Google, we have a shared drive for the target team, and so each student has their own folder with graphs for the, with Excel spreadsheets to track each specific block, each specific day of the week, how many points were earned for each day, so we can look at the common, common frequencies in the, in the, in the data. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's room for improvement?
Our data in general is tracked in Power School. We have started piloting in two grade levels, using Google, Google Forms. We just piloted that at a couple, just to think about some ideas, and that's a discussion we need to have going forward.
Yeah, maybe to take less time out of your target team's data tracking.
Yeah, to make it more shareable and things like that. But in general, all of our data is tracked in Power School. We also track data through, Pam Kimbrough in the Student Support Center has her, her own tracking in terms of how many students come in and out of her room, that may not always be office referrals, they may be taking a break, they may be a variety of different things, but she does keep her own log in terms of that as well. And then with the behavior sheets, those are tracked through the paper forms, and then tracked, if, if we compile that data, it'll be in Excel, spreadsheet, or Google Sheets.
I just read something back in March, it was late March, where they gave national statistics of typically 80 percent of your student population responds to tier one intervention. It's like that 80/20 rule, 15 percent need the tier two and 5 percent of the tier three. So if I crunch the numbers that both of you just presented, Valley View, if I were to say that those total numbers were tier two and tier three combined, right, because I know the breakdown there, you're at 10 percent compared to 20 percent nationally. So I can't, I, I don't know if it's fair to say that our population in Farmington has, is worse off. Maybe the severity of the issues, that would take a lot, digger deeping.
I wouldn't say we're worse off, I just think it's, Diana kind of touched on this, it's just something we need to recognize, as nationally, things are getting worse.
Yeah, yeah. But for Henry Wilson, it seems to be a bit higher than the average, not your, your top three. If I run your numbers, you said there were 10 out of about 318 students, that's about 4 percent. Nationally, there's five, but overall, your tier two and tier three combined, you've got about 27 percent in the peak at any one time, and you'd ideally plan for your peak and hope for better, right?
I think part of what the issue is in terms of, at least at Henry Wilson and at Farmington High School, the peak can involve three administrators in a room with one child, and that happened last week. So when you've got three administrators wrapped up with one kid, not much else is happening in terms of the administrative piece or the educational leadership that's supposed to be going on. And I think that's where, where, you know, looking at the numbers, the numbers are small, but when an incident happens, it's, it's intense. I think you're, you're absolutely right, and it's, it's all encompassing.
And you need to call medical services or whatnot, and.
We, we leverage everything we can in terms of getting students help.
The Student Support Center.
Yes.
When a child gets sent there, tell me what happens in that room.
Yeah, again, it can be a variety of things. I think that at times it is a great resource in terms of a kid who is just having trouble focusing. focusing. He goes in, there'll be some processing, get a little bit of work going, get back to class. A lot of times, there's a quick phone call between the teacher and Pam Kimbrough in that room to just kind of communicate, here's what I need, check in, back to class. But ultimately, in the course of a given day, there's a lot of different things happening in there. I mean, the reality is, if we have an in-school suspension, they are in there.
That was my next question.
Yeah, that's where they are. If we have, you know, kids who are disruptive that are sent from class are generally sent there. It can be a mix. It can be a mix of pretty much anything at a given time, essentially, is...
Has that room and the individual whose staff sit had an opportunity to work with Dr. Lebron?
I'm trying to think specifically about each of the trainings. I do not believe the powers happen in there. I know that there have been some different trainings that she has done specifically.
That would be a suggestion.
Well, and it's something that we've tried to schedule, and our snow dates interfered at least twice with that as well.
Yeah, we did have, I think, two different days that were scheduled for Paris to be in.
It's not off the radar.
I have to say this tactfully so that no one gets offended. Parent professionals get less PD traditionally, I don't know if that happens now, than professionals. They get, I'm not sure they get the same type of specific specialized instruction in PD when we talk about behaviors that the teachers get.
Sure. So we just recently had a constellations, a person from Constellational Behavioral Services come in and do a workshop for, I think it was, two and a half, three hours with paraeducators being the specific focus regarding working with students with disruptive behaviors and managing behavior plans and those things that are important. We also did the social thinking. Granted, not every para could attend, but we did have great attendance at that. Our CPI training, which occurred just this past May, also deals with the de-escalation process in terms of addressing students with behavioral issues. Those are ones off the top of my head.
Yeah.
But I, for what they have to do, I agree. There's a lot more that needs to be added.
I guess without picking on an individual, and I'm not trying to, I have great respect for the individual that means that woman's that room. I think if we can get creative and get that individual as much training as we can, because that's a big plate. As you've said, there's all kinds of stuff going in that room, going on in that room. And when you add to that that that's the room that you use for ISS, that's a lot for an individual, whether it be a teacher or para. So just, it just, you know...
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was just going to touch on. I think that regardless of the individual who is in that room, there's a lot on the plate. I spend a lot of time in that room kind of trying to middleman a lot of those different things, whether it's the kids who are causing a lot of disruption and pulling them and working with them separately, to try to help that room be a place, because that individual works great with the kids. She has done some of those trainings, like I said, not that one specifically, but she does a great job with the kids in there. Sometimes the reality is, it's a lot on the plate for anybody.
Be interesting, I know that we have Dr. Lebron after-school at staff meetings and stuff, but, you know, if we could ever tweak it so that he could come in a little early and just simply observe what happens in that room. And he has.
He has.
He has. Oh, good, I'm glad you knew that.
Yeah, we've had those conversations. Yeah, he spent a lot of, he does come for, there have been a lot of days where he's come for our staff meeting from three to four, but he's come at one o'clock and done observations throughout the building.
Nice, I'm glad to hear that.
So generally, him and I will have those conversations, or with Ms. Richardson, and then we'll have those follow-up conversations. If he observes in a classroom, generally, he'll go observe, and we'll get coverage for him to meet with that person for a period of time. So he's done a lot of that this year.
Thank you, Mr. Coop.
You're welcome. Mrs. Peabody?
Why don't we quicker, because I can just say ditto for the most part. And that's for real. We have students that we have specific targeted, you know, behaviors that... We have specific targeted behaviors that we have to write plans for. We do call the parents and get their thoughts on that, too. They don't necessarily always come in, but we do involve them in the process of coming up with ideas. And then we do have meetings in progress, monitor how that's going. Primarily, our, I could just talk without looking at this, though. It is customized for the students. It's, what's difficult at the high school level is stickers won't work for them, and, you know, getting an extra recess won't work for them. So it's very different at the high school level. So our success is, we're talking about that one student, this is a student that was out of district that came in and worked in the life skills program specifically. So they had a more, you know, more personnel around watching. But that person's done extremely well when they came in, because they specifically had that program to go to. I know constantly, I'm doing check-in, check-out with students all day long, trying to build those relationships with students, so they feel that they can come to me before they're getting upset. That's gone extremely well. I know that guidance works well with that. Teachers have been very supportive as far as in-school suspensions. They've, we've had quite a few, and we don't have, we don't have a tree room, we don't have a student support center, we don't have that here. So our teachers have been fabulous as far as stepping up and say, I'll take that student specifically and putting them in a corner of their room. It's not ideal, I'm not going to lie to you, it's just not ideal, but it's all we have. Dr. Moore has created an after-school detention duty that's done well by that. Teachers have been covering it, and students that receive admin detentions.
Before you jump ahead.
Sure.
Explain a little more in detail how we're working hard to build relationships with students.
Well, I was talking about me specifically.
Oh, you specifically.
A lot of check-in, check-out. I know guidance does a lot of check-in, check-out. Teachers are, take a lot of kids aside. I can specifically tell you teachers that have done the same thing with students as well. Those in-school suspension teachers have really gone above and beyond and pulled those kids aside and had those personal conversations to build those relationships as well.
When you have a frequent, when you have a group of frequent flyers, for example, the top ten.
Yeah.
Which is a different top ten than the students do. Do we, do we talk to the student and ask this type of data? Who do you feel connected to here at school?
Oh, sure.
Who do you trust?
Oh, absolutely.
And vice versa, do we then ask the staff member if they feel a connection with that person? I think it's an interesting exercise, because it's not always the same answer. And...
Sometimes it's a different answer on different days, depending if they're mad at the person as well.
Right, right. But it'd be interesting to take your frequent flyers, your top tens, and find out who's their connection here, if any. My guess is that some of them will say they don't.
I think you're right.
And then what do we do as a result of that answer?
Absolutely.
So just, sorry.
No, it's okay. Challenges, the climate and culture has been, has been difficult. I think providing staff with tools. I think you mentioned having some PD. I think that's our focus next year, to be honest with you. You can have the best laid-out plans in the classroom, but if you have students that won't listen, it's not going to work. So I think we need to help our teachers. Just like students, sometimes we expect things from them, and we make some assumptions, and I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to very specific have a plan for them and give our staff direct instruction on how to deal with some of these behaviors. Space, like the in-school suspension, when a student's sent to the office and some of them have to calm down, but at this level, they become more aggressive verbally, to say the least. So we don't really want them in the office going off like that, so we have to find places for them to go. Many of our adverse students, they have low grades and don't feel, they don't have that buy-in, why do the work? They have a lot of self-esteem issues as well. So when they go to class, they don't pay attention, they're disruptive. So we have to find a way to grab those kids and, obviously, and help them. And again, the PD for staff. The numbers, our freshman class, and I don't like to say that as a whole, because it's really not the whole freshman class, it really isn't. It's a small percentage that has a lot of referrals, and they, they're on behavior plans, and we're working with them. It's the guidance and special ed teachers that primarily, but they work with, like myself and Dr. Moore, to get ideas. They work with classroom teachers to get the ideas. They don't make those plans in isolation. It really is a team effort, and we have core meetings with guidance and admin as well. And realize, these referrals are, these are the high level, most of the time, high level. These aren't just, you don't have your homework type things. These are very aggressive behaviors sometimes. Again, who creates the plan? Five-O Force, guidance, we work with Core to come up with some ideas as well. Special ed teachers, they have been working with Brittany, our BCB, yeah. And our case managers follow through. We have Google Forms where the parents, we share it with parents, so they can see it, because high school kids are not going to bring paperwork back and forth. If we say, tell your mom, they'll keep it for a month. Again, we use Power School for our tracking as well. And I know at the beginning of this, Diana mentioned all the different things that have changed. And I've been in the field of education for a couple of years, and I've seen things come and go and different ideas. But the constant is our relationships with students and how we build those. And then with technology, to be honest with you, the phones and the internet and social media is constant. We are in constant battle with that, and I think that needs to be addressed as well. Like I said, with, as far as the PD, we said we have to teach the teachers how to work with these kids, but we also have to have a way of finding where we can meet with those kids and meet them where they are and bring them forward. You know, they're all day in classrooms, and we have to find, it's like a puzzle, we have to find a way to reach them. And it's not just admin, it's not just staff, it's not, it's the community, we all have to do this together, and there's a lot of work to do. I wish I could tell you there's not, there's a lot of work to do. And I can't sugarcoat it for you. There's a lot of work, and we need to roll up our sleeves and we need to figure out how we're going to do it. Any questions?
I just, one question. When you say parent workshops, explosive child, is that coming?
That's what we're attempting to arrange. So what you see up there, we're all, we've already spoken with Polly Bath, who works on a national level, international level, with teachers and just really common-sense ways to manage behaviors with students that, you know, say a terrible word in your classroom. Really practical approaches to that. So we, we're looking at bringing her in on those dates to, one, just do observations and then meet with teams. Continuation of PBIS work at Henry Wilson is going to continue. We want to get parent workshops. I've already been in contact with Lynn Lyons to find out what would it look like to do presentations for grade levels, just to the students, one, to understand, you know, when I feel anxiety, what is, what is this I'm feeling? And to bring her back again to do a parent workshop in the evening. We'd like to get Ross Green in. I haven't spoken to him yet. I have had a response for Lynn.
I went to a Ross Green workshop twenty-four years ago, and the common theme, it was a full-day thing, was connection, connection, connection. So I hope he's still...
And that is, I've seen him recently, and that is really still what he's preaching. And it's, and his quote was, you know, you can't, and it's the wanna, you can't, a kid, kid's not going to focus on wanna. It's got to be learning the skills to be able to demonstrate the behavior we're looking for. So, yeah, we'd like to bring him in as well, to work with parents and staff in terms of doing a workshop about how to manage kids that are, you know, at that explosive level.
Further questions for Mrs. Peabody?
Thank you very much.
I think it's important to say that, in the prepared budget that was originally presented, some of these obstacles were trying to be addressed. When you lose several hundred thousand dollars in the process of your budget cycle, it's hard to bring in new programming. And so we will try again. But it is hard when you lose that much money.
And we are hoping to be able to do some staff shifts to be able to perhaps have pieces, although it won't be as comprehensive as we would have liked with our numbers, to see if we can, you know, reassign some people who may be able to pick up some of those pieces.
I want to thank the administrative team. I, you know, I know that coming before us at nine-thirty at night causes you to have probably a fourteen- to fifteen-hour day, and it's a long day, but I appreciate it. We don't see as many students in non-public session as we used to because of some tweaks in policy, so it's hard to really get a gauge on how are things going out there. And so this is something that we really needed. Thank you.
And along those lines, what I would like to do for admin reports next year is to have those be thematic. So, you know, this was, you know, a request, we'd like behavior, a behavior report. I'd like a list from the board of, these are some pieces that we would like information on, so that instead of just kind of the generic, this is what we're giving you for general information, and here's the three great things that happened, although we certainly want to continue that piece, to be able to say, maybe quarterly, here's the quarterly report on this topic, so that there can be maybe a little bit deeper dive and give people a better view of what it is, and also targeted information rather than just the same old thing.
Any new business from the board? Anything that you thought of?
In, I do have a, one new business piece, and this is more for you to be looking at. In your packets, there is a...
Thank you, folks, for attending.
There is, the revised general assurances from the commissioner have, were released at the end of last week. There's also an email in there from the Administrators Association. The primary change, there's a number of changes that have been put in because of tweaks to the federal regulations. But our commissioner has added of his own volition, a place where the general assurances have always been signed by the superintendent in order to receive federal funds for any of the grants. It's kind of like, here's the pre, we promised to do this, and here's the information that we're giving you. I sign off on it, and then we can start applying. The commissioner has now added to that, that the board has to approve and the board chairman has to sign. It's not federally required, and it's not necessarily gone through another approval process. He's included it because he thought it was a good idea. And so I've brought it to the board for your information. The School Boards Association is in the process of putting together a policy that says, if you've always had the superintendent sign these, you may want to say, we're going to make a motion to continue that, and here's the policy that we have in place that says that can happen. But it's just to kind of let you know what's coming down the road, because either policy needs to be in place or signatures need to happen fairly quickly so that the next grant cycle can happen. So it's something that will require your attention, but it's in there more now for you to read over, and we'll probably revisit on the eighteenth, but I wanted you to know what was there and why.
Okay. Thank you. Any new business? Old business? Any old business from the board?
Can't remember if I wrote down notes, I'm sorry, you need to find me.
Any old business from the superintendent?
I'm not sure. Looking at the letter.
Yeah, I think we are.
Well, that was going to be our new business. Yep.
Yes, please. All right, I'll raise it. This is regarding, at the May twenty-third Budget Committee meeting, Farmington Town Budget Committee meeting, I wasn't able to attend, I was out of state, and our alternate went, Mrs. McLoheny. And the Budget Committee went into non-public session, and I know this from their public draft minutes. And I'm told the only thing that can be shared with us is a letter that was drafted on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. of the Board of Selectmen by the Business Administrator of the town to Mrs. Ravel and CC'd Ms. Bond as the School District Business Administrator and Superintendent, citing a difference in bottom-line dollar amounts for the 2016 school year. This letter has two-dollar amounts, one of which we don't, as a school board and certainly as a representative to the Budget Committee, don't have any backup documentation to where this number was derived from. And it's comparing it to the MS-25, which is the official document that your school board members, superintendent, business administrator, we all sign to report to the Department of Revenue, how much money is left over at the end of the school year to be returned to the town, which the town then, the Board of Selectmen, have the decision-making power and right and responsibility to decide to use that money to reduce the tax rate for our taxpayers. So the letter requests more information. That 2016 school year, the audit has yet to be completed. We will have our auditors here at the June eighteenth School Board meeting, correct? And they will present the results from the audit of the 2016 school year.
And seventeen.
And seventeen.
And fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
All outstanding audits will be reported to the school board at that time. The reason why, as you're appointed representative to the Town Budget Committee, the reason why I think it's important to bring it up in open meeting, and we're doing it in the School Board meeting, is to let individuals know, and especially school district employees and students and parents and taxpayers, know that there's very strict processes in place, they're being followed. And when a letter is brought to the School District Administration and the School Board to say that there is belief that the numbers don't match, we really need the backup reports, we really need the backup information in order to speak intelligently to other emails.
Yes. We received a second email today, late this afternoon. That same letter was resent. We're in the process of, obviously, getting the rest of that audit completed. And part of the letter references something from 2016 and something from 2017 that is comparing, it's not comparing the same year.
I'm not sure.
So we're, we're really needing to have the complete audits to be able to go back and look to see exactly where the number is that's being referenced. There was some information that was released to auditing firms that was part of an incomplete audit.
Yes.
As they were requesting documentation as part of a response to requests for proposals for a new auditing firm for the district, because we've been with the same auditors for several years. And it's good general practice to continue to change auditors periodically just to keep things completely above board. And so we were in that process, request was made, information was given, but it wasn't on a complete audit. It's been presented to the town as though this was a complete number and therefore there's a discrepancy. As soon as we have those numbers complete, we will be then following up with exactly where we are, but we don't have that complete piece from Lanson yet. Can I just also say that we weren't the ones who provided that information? Yes. To the town. So we did not give them incomplete information, it came from an outside source. Yes, an outside source passed that on to the town as complete information.
Any other comment from you?
At the next Budget Committee meeting, I will see about making sure that Budget Committee only considers complete and public information in their decision-making. And I will be asking a lot of questions to understand the decision to go into non-public concealed minutes as a Budget Committee, because there's very specific rules in the right-to-know law, which is RSA ninety-one A, on when you can go into non-public. It's not a matter of go into non-public if you need to. It's, there are specific reasons how you can go into non-public and why you should.
And reasons for which something can be sealed.
Yeah.
Anything else for public session? Any public input at this time?
And I just, I do want to at least put this out, I just noticed I had an email from a viewer and it came through at seven-twenty-four that said, there's no sound. Now, I don't know if that was just before we actually went into public session, or I think we were in public session at that point. I apologize, I don't generally check my email during board meetings, so I'm not sure if we have sound out on the recording or not, we'll double-check.
Thanks, and my thanks in regards to Mrs. McLeheny, you cannot be here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next School Board meeting will be June eighteenth, right here at six-thirty. A reminder that one of the premier events is Farmington High School graduation, which will be on June sixteenth at ten AM.
Yes.
And Last Chapel, which is also open to folks, is June fifteenth at nine AM, Dr. Moore? Nine AM, I believe, yeah. So we're looking forward to that. I thank you to those of you who are viewing from home, I hope we did have sound, and thank you to those of you who came out here this evening. I want to entertain a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, two, A, B, and C for nominations and reservations.
Actually, session two.
Sorry, that's session two, sorry. So moved by Mr. Frida, seconded by Mrs. Moore, and all those in favor, by a roll. Aye. Good night, folks.
Thank you.